Good evening, everyone. I'll call to order the workshop for April 24th, 2017. We've got three items. Mr. Devin, you want to lead us off?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The first item is a community visioning proposal that was something that council asked us to look into during the 2016 Council Strategic Planning Retreat. It was something that was suggested by Councilmember Ford, and Councilmember Ford worked with our staff principally Maria Vanderkolk and I to look at, you know, what was, what she had in mind regarding this matter. And we did some extensive research and found the process that occurred in Longmont, Colorado, a few years ago had, was, was pretty applicable to, to what was, what Councilmember Ford had in mind. So we found the consultants, Barbara Lewis and Chris Chapiak, who met with our leadership team, and through that discussion, we felt it would be very appropriate for them to make a presentation here to the city council during a workshop, and we scheduled it for tonight's workshop. So I'd like to introduce Barbara and Chris, who will lead off the presentation, and they have some slides and some other information to share with you tonight about this.
Thank you, Mr. Devin. Ladies.
Thank you. I'm Barbara, and this is Chris. And what we'd like to do is just talk a little bit about what makes our approach unique. And then we have this wonderful graphic, which is part of our approach that we'll walk through, that kind of is a summary of our proposal. So the approach that we're using is one that has been used by numerous private companies. It's been used by a wide array of nonprofits and governments at the local, regional, state, and national level. Here in Colorado, several cities and counties have used it. Denver, Boulder, Fort Collins, Golden, and Longmont have all used it for different purposes, ranging from trying to streamline their building permit review process to doing a full citywide strategic plan. So we'll kind of touch on a little bit of some of the experiences we've had with using it in Colorado. So you have a proposal, and we'll walk through that in a little bit, but first, I'd like to, I'd like to highlight what makes this approach so unique and what really are the benefits for the city of Arvada. The first thing is that this approach connects the community. And you have that phrase up there that says, "Through improbable pairs sharing stories." So what do we mean by that? What we mean is that we intentionally bring people who wouldn't otherwise talk to each other and talked about the city of Arvada to each other together in interviews to dig into their stories of the best of Arvada and their images of the future for the city. So that quote up there talks about, "By the end, the soccer guys were trading cards with the fishermen." We're getting people who wouldn't normally connect to come together and do interviews. And by so doing, what we're, what we're doing is the process itself is connecting and strengthening the community. The second unique feature is that it illuminates community pride so that people can rediscover Arvada at its best. You see here examples from, from several different events that we've had, but what we find is that as city council people, you probably experienced this far more than I do, but that is that people bring you their complaints, they bring you their problems, they bring you the stories of when things went wrong. And what happens is that we believe that culture is created by the stories that we tell ourselves about ourselves. So what we end up with is a culture about the problems, about what's wrong, and you end up with this kind of feeling of dissatisfaction or of discord. What we do in this process is we flip that to really digging into what's working well and what is Arvada like when it's at its best. And we use those factors as kind of stepping stones for how the community can envision and create the future that it wants. The third thing is we say, "Create involvement through involvement." Now, that may sound like a strange phrase, but what we mean to say is that when people are engaged in a process where it's, it's engaging, it's fun, it's meaningful, they want to do more of it. They want to stay involved. This is the headline that came out of the community vision at the city of Longmont. Democracy is not a spectator sport. And we have, we're proposing a similar community summit for, for your process. And what the paper said was, "They were astounded by the mix of people from their community that came together and how citizens learned that they agree about more things than they This process also aligns expectations. The visuals that you see here are, one of Chris's many areas of expertise is helping people come together to communicate through pictures is much more powerful and has common, more powerful meaning for people than just using the words that we typically use. So what you see up there is a, a future vision graphic that we just did for the Denver Museum of Nature and Science through their process and also Longmont's future vision graphic. But the one I want to highlight is the, the strategic plan there, creating vibrant communities in which we all age well. This was Boulder County's strategic plan on aging services. It was a plan that received regional, state, and national awards. And what was really unique about it was that when they presented the plan to the commissioners, they had 70 people who came to support the plan because they were very invested in it. And it's that kind of investment that, into a shared vision that creates this aligned action. And then the final thing that I wanted to touch on is that, what's important is that the effort be, that it matter for people and that it be real. This, what you see up here is a graphic from the city of Longmont, and what they have experienced since the plan they did, Mark said, a few years ago, and actually, they completed it in 2006, and the strategic directions that came from that plan lasted through three elections, meaning that three sets of city council followed those same strategic directions because they had such traction within the community. They meant so much to the community. And that process also was the, the leverage point for the city starting a whole new initiative now where they're focusing on their relational infrastructure. What that means is they're not going to wait to do their transportation plan or their housing plan to engage people. They're going to engage people every day and talking to them about what it is they want their city to be like. So they're starting a whole new initiative on the heels of that strategic plan. So those are just a few things that are key factors that we wanted to highlight for you in this, in this process. And another part that's really key is the fact that we communicate the process with people through graphics. And so Chris is going to touch on our, our proposal put into pictures.
Okay, we were trying to figure out, yeah, we need to do the screen, there we go, okay. So we were trying to figure out earlier this evening how, how to do this so in a way that you could see this, and I'll leave this with Mark and his team. So if you want to have some more deliberation using this document, you can. So a couple of prefaces. I work in pictures, not because I'm an artist, although I do artistic work. My real strength and sweet spot is community engagement and strategy. And it's, I have the privilege of doing that in a lot of different places, especially in my home state of Colorado. And a few years ago, I wrote a book about why do we use pictures to build a strategy? And here's two reasons why, and I, and why we decided to present it like this. The first one is that pictures engage both parts of our brain regardless of our age. So as we look at pictures, we make meaning, and the meaning we make as we're looking at something, all of it matters. So imagine if this room were full of 50 people or 100 people, they would start looking at these pictures with these little anchored words like core team, stakeholder map, but they would start creating their own pictures in their heads about what, what that means. Second reason I absolutely love doing this approach is because it creates an invitation for people to talk about the things that matter. So how many times do we get into a meeting where somebody gives us a directive and we don't want to talk about that because what really matters is something that's over here? And so one of the things that Barbara touched on about our approach, it's not just the visuals, but, you know, we are not the kind of consultants that come in and are front forward in a process. We're really leading from behind, coaching, mentoring, and setting up a project for success so that in her Longmont example, the project exists long after we're gone, right? We're really about empowering the community to realize its own vision on its own two legs, four legs, however you want to look at it, and to do that in such a way that is compelling and sustaining. So my little diagram, this little diagram here kind of outlines what we, what we put into the proposal, but we'll stop at the first box. So there's a phase of this process that's around project organizing. So we get a, we get, we pull together a core team that may, we would really collaborate with Mark and his team and some of you to figure out who would comprise that core team. But that core team is, is core to the process because they help guide and inform the process and co-create with us how we're going to really roll this thing out. At the same time, we have this important connection to council because that is our accountability mechanism and it's a way of being able to report back to you without getting you into the details, what's happening, what our plan is going forward. This stakeholder map that you see in the upper right hand, if you're looking at the map directly, you know, who are the stakeholders in our community? Who are they connected to? What matters to them? Where do they live? What role does geography play? We do a big blowout on the, the city itself and try and understand from a demographics, but also a geographic component because those histories, especially in Arvada, play a very interesting and very important role in terms of how we make democracy not a spectator sport, how we participate. Then we do, along with council, core team, and then the CCC I'll talk about, we'll, we'll do a process flow, we'll figure out how are we going to do this, over what period of time? We've put an estimate of seven months in this particular proposal, but that's still very rough based on what kind of outcomes we want to accomplish, what are the gaps we're trying to fill, and then prioritizing those activities in some kind of action plan that council can respond to. CCC, Community Coordinating Committee. So this is, you know, borrowing from leadership development that you have already invested in, in the city, taking community members and being able to put their great work in City Hall 101 and some of the leadership work that you've done already and putting them into some of those roles. And so we come up with this, the coordinating committee would be those 20, 20 people or so from Arvada that represent all sides of the community. That's why that stakeholder map is so important. So you can see this is the organizing time. We're trying to get all our ducks in the row, make sure we have, we've identified all the stakeholders, all the important pieces, what matters to those people, and then we move into this community launch. So this is the second part of our, of our proposal, and we do this in a variety of ways, right? Because there, everybody learns in a different way. Some of us are more comfortable in one-to-one interviews. Other people want to get with their neighbors and talk about things. So we have mini, mini meetings, we have bigger meetings, we have one-to-one interviews, we have people who can use an online forum to be able to contribute their ideas. But the most important thing is we set some important questions that we want to invite the community to comment on in our organizing phase, and this is the phase where we start generating a lot of ideas about when Arvada is at its best, what do those things look like? What do you love about living here? I mean, these are just off-the-cuff kind of questions, but that's where peeling back the layers of the onion and really understanding the community, what's important to the community now and what will be important to them in the future comes through that idea generation. Then you see a whole bunch of arrows and stuff at the bottom of that diagram. So we have the core team who's looking at the interviews, the mini meetings. We have the CCC conducting some of those interviews, but also working with the core team, providing feedback. Do we need to modify the questions or our level of engagement? And then finally, how do we make meaning of all these interviews and all this information that we, that we've gathered? We do that together with a, with a coordinating committee and the core team, and then an important component or a placeholder would be updating council. So here's what we heard. Here's what we found. Here's how many people we talked to. Here's what is emerging is what's really important so that you're part of the process every step of the way. The third piece is now that we understand what really matters to people and what's important to people within the city of Arvada itself, then we actively dive into a community visioning process. Now, you can see how these different, the organizing activity and the community launch activity has started building language messaging, connection with people in the community. So by the time we get to this community visioning process, really looking at Arvada at its best in a summit, you saw some of the pictures that Barbara showed of, of Longmont and Golden, we've created enough traction, enough buzz, and enough relationships that people really want to come together and talk about what is the vision for our city. They understand that this is an open process. They understand they're going to be guided and led by some of their own community members, but nobody is going to tell them what to do. And this visioning process becomes a very robust way to bring our very best ideas together, categorize, and prioritize them. And I've had, Barbara and I've done work together, we've done work separately, but I'm thinking particularly right now in the city of Cortez, Colorado, you know, there were 150, 170 community members who spent a day in a gym actually doing the prioritization and categorizing. It wasn't, it was just us moving things around, helping them understand a, a three- to five-year timeline in terms of what was going to work best for their city, what they could afford, and what they had a lot of passion to do. So the final phase is this action map part. So we bring the very best of the entire process, and that's why there are these blue arrows that go across this entire visual. At the very end of the day, we want to provide the city of Arvada with an action map that details the most important components and the very best ideas that we learned out of this visioning process to be able to be used in your next strategic planning effort. I talked really fast and I gave you a lot of information, but that's what, the proposal that you have, that's what it looks like visually. Any questions?
Thank you. Council questions? Mr. McGough.
Yes, I've got a couple of questions, just to make sure I understand the thing. So the product of the work of the visioning, pulling people together, is this action map? That's the product?
Well, it would be, it would be both the vision, okay? So the vision graphic, and sometimes it's a vision, it can have a statement with it as well, and the action map. And, and it's, it's going to be designed so that that can then lead into your update to your strategic plan so that it'll flow into that.
Okay, so that's the, the product, and so one of the basic questions is, of folks is, what's working well? And then I guess, what would you like to see different in the future? Is that right?
Yes, the interview guide is actually designed by taking the Community Coordinating Committee through an interview process where they identify what are the main topics that we should ask questions about. And the questions typically, there's kind of a thing called a 4D model. It, it first is discovery of Arvada at its best, and it may be, for instance, in Longmont, there were four topics they wanted to lean into. So we ask questions about Longmont at its best, when there is prosperity for all, Longmont at its best, when it's enhancing its environmental legacy, when it's, has an exciting living and business personality, and also when it feels like one giant front porch. So we have, we, we have a lot of kind of, it's, the interview guide is tailor-made for Arvada and what really are the core things that make Arvada tick. So those are about Arvada at its best, and then we ask questions about what people would like to see in the future. And then we go on to what are their ideas for making that happen? So we expect to get, you know, I think we had 500 ideas out of, in, in Long, in the Longmont process. And then we ask questions about what are the steps that are needed to make that happen? And typically, there's an element of that that's not just about what should the city do, but it's also what should community members be doing? So it, it, it creates this sense of partnership between the city and the people who live and work here.
Okay, and you'd mentioned that, first of all, you worked in, you worked in various cities and counties, and you said that the, the visioning process is used for different purposes. What were some of those purposes that were, you know, in the example you gave is that it, you come up with a, a map and a plan.
Right.
But if they're used for other purposes, what other purposes have been identified?
It's whatever the city wants more of. So I gave you the example of Longmont. They wanted a citywide strategic plan that would help them become a free, mature, a freestanding, mature, sustainable community when they had reached build-out of their planning area. That's what they were focused on. In the case of, I mentioned Denver. In Denver, it was more a partnership meeting for the Eagle P3 project. They were in a situation where RGD in Denver and the private contractor were at loggerheads. So in their instance, they, they were focused on collaborative excellence and bringing forward principles of collaborative excellence and then applying that to the project. Boulder did streamline building permit review. Fort Collins was looking at the feasibility of a community marketplace using this process. Yeah, and.
I was just going to say, the city of Golden used this kind of process to be able to do some values-based decision-making when they were in the process of evaluating transit before the mass transit system went out there. And the interesting thing about that, that sounds kind of crazy, values-based decision-making in, in public spaces. But what was really fascinating is that the mass transit project was far enough along that people could take a look at the master plan that was being planned and then test, they had a lot of competing values. So they, the community actually, as one of the summits, actually tested those values against each other to see what the priorities were. And what it really illuminated for Golden, that is, I would say, the other work product that Barbara didn't mention is the investment you're making in your community to make sustainable decisions. Because in the state, in the case of Golden, people all of a sudden felt the way you guys do, where you're having to balance competing interests, investments, how do we fund this? How do we not fund this? What are our priorities? All of a sudden, they were looking at a mass transit plan and sitting across from them was their neighbor that they adore, and they disagreed on, you know, key elements. And so that process really surfaced some of the things that they really had in common and put people in, in scenarios where they had to empathize, but then also understand what was really important to their community.
Thank you.
John Marriott.
Let's have a quick question. The, the graphics and the artwork still are for somebody who's not artistic at all. I'm always really impressed by that kind of stuff, but the bigger question I have is, you know, when it comes to these community visioning type of, of exercises, it seems to me that we have that every two years when we have elections, that, you know, the citizens get to weigh in on what their vision for the city is by virtue of their votes, by, by who they, who they elect. And it, it kind of leads me to, how do you, how can these exercises be done like this and not have the effect of, of charting a course forward that's, that's bigger or longer than what the, the citizens dictate when they vote every two years and seat different council members? In other words, these things seem like they, they gain kind of outsized importance, like you, you've done this big project, you've spent money, you've engaged people, you've drawn pictures, you've, you've come up with a list of this and of that. But yet, two years later, or four years later, every one of these seats up here could be filled by somebody else who has a very different look at things and may have been intentionally placed there by voters who were voting for a very different look at things. But yet, here is some, you know, work product that a bunch of effort, energy, brain power, and money went into. I mean, what's your experience with that? I.
Well, I think that the, you know, this kind of process brings people who have all different kinds of attitudes together, and they, they look for their common ground. So what it does is give you the foundation of a community vision that you can use in setting policy. Now, does that, do you have the flexibility to change it? Yes, is, what, what, I mean, in Longmont, they, part of the process was creating a report card where they were accountable to the community on how they were meeting the different policy directions. And as, you know, council would look at what was being achieved or not, they might change, you know, a strategy to achieve this or to achieve that based upon how they were doing in the report card. They also had a process for updating the plan. It wasn't as involved as, as the first one, but when they came back and updated the plan, they added some, some other elements. For instance, the, there wasn't an emphasis on, on public safety in the first go-around, so they added that. So there was that update process as, as it went forward. So I think there is that flexibility for new councils to, to tweak it based upon how the community changes. Obviously, we wouldn't want a vision that was set 100 years ago to be what we would be doing today.
In the case of Longmont, how long ago did they do this exercise?
They did the, it began in 2004.
It's been a long time now, then.
It has been a long time.
And, and, you know, like, I guess, not that I would necessarily feel one way or another, but if I were elected as a city council member in 2013 to Longmont, and, and part of the scorecard was my environmental legacy or something like that, you know, may or may not have any importance to me whatsoever. And, you know, how does the plan, how does it live for more than just an instant in time? And, and, but, but not have the effect of, of a council that kind of takes on a project like this and develops this work product of trying to influence those who come after them?
I mean, I would just add just a couple of things. First of all, that's why the core team is not the council. I mean, just to be very blunt, that you need a diverse representation that's helping, guiding, and informing, and council needs to be informed of the process. But also, we don't want to use you as a, a political prod or a lightning rod because the whole purpose of a pro, a program or process like this is to actually gain wider community support for the kinds of things and the kind of resiliency. I mean, so thinking worst-case scenario, how does a community respond when, when tragedy strikes or when things hit it? Barbara has a great story around Longmont and the floods. What I wanted to talk about, I really, I hear what you're saying, and how do you, how can council both champion support and role model, kind of lead this effort, but also kind of leave a legacy by not driving it or driving people away from the process to then come back three or four years later and not engage in the process? And just a quick story, so in the North Fork Valley, Peonia, Crawford, and Hotchkiss, three very different communities, hippies, ranchers, and miners, used this process to actually create some common ground, which they really, really struggled with. But they're all in the same county, and the one thing that has held that community together was really what this process unveiled was two things. Hotchkiss and Crawford are really suffering because more people are living, are leaving there than are staying. And so they're losing school funding, they're losing a lot of state funding to support the kind of rural lifestyle that they, they had. Peonia is attracting people and it, it makes the other two groups pretty angry. But what they, what superseded everything else was water, is they have no emergency water system. And that, and that process, maybe individually, Peonia realized that, and maybe Hotchkiss realized that, but they are connected because they have a thing that they need to work on together. And I would just say, in that, in a very controversial set, it's those community connections that have lived on to apoliticize an issue that council is no longer really responsible for. So it's not the best example of the avoidance, but it is a really good example where you started with people who had so much acrimonious energy against each other that actually, you know, willingly come to the table to talk things out because they know they have to, not because it's politically popular or unpopular.
Okay. One last thing, and that's, given this process, this kind of way and process of developing something, what do you do with issues where parts of the community are absolutely diametrically opposed to other parts of the community? I mean, like, there's not always common ground, it's nice to say, we'll get together and find common ground on everything, but, but there are clearly issues that are, that that's not the case. there are clearly issues that are, that that's not the case.
Well, I think that...
Do you, do you just avoid those? I mean, Longmont had to have some of those.
Oh, we definitely had that. In fact, that was...
The majority win, I mean, in elections, we know how that works.
Yeah, exactly.
The winners decide, you know?
Yeah. Well, Longmont definitely had that, and that was one of the reasons why that article was so amazing in the sense that, I mean, the reporter was like, you mean that person? Was that that summit? Creating a vision with council members that just the previous month he had been, you know, ranting at. So, you know, the, there's a, there's a, there's a difference that occurs when people first begin by focusing on what works and what, what, and on what's positive. People, they don't come into the room with the baggage, with their interests that they're ready to fight about. So they're, they enter at a point where they're more willing to look for common ground and to identify what that common ground is. That there'll, there'll be things in the plan that some people don't like and things that, other things that they do like. So ultimately, it's, you know, it's just like any kind of governmental decision-making. It's the art of compromise and trying to kind of find the higher ground, if you will. You want to add anything?
Thank you. David Jones.
Thank you. Actually, John An asked a couple of questions that I had, but I want to follow up on a couple of them.
Okay.
So his last question about differing sides of the community, if you look at Arvada, and I'm guessing any city, you know, what the east side of Arvada needs and the west side of Arvada needs are starkly different. And so, again, and you said that, you know, the core team is not the council, and so you've got those 20 citizens that have come together representing, I guess, all parts of the city. So let's just pretend for a second that you don't get anybody who raises their hand and say, says, "I want to represent the east side of Arvada." But you have everybody else there, but nobody really advocating for that place. How do you deal with that?
I'd say you find that person before you start. So the project that we just finished with the Denver Museum of Nature and Science, they wanted to do a future vision involving the people who don't go to the museum now. So it's kind of hard to do visioning when you have people who don't have any relationship with the museum. So we worked really hard to contact people, to kind of network and find people who had credibility with this person, and if that person didn't work out, to find the next person, and finally get to where we felt we had all the voices at the table that we needed. So we do the same thing there. We'd find the person who knows the person, who can talk to them and engage them in the process, because it's very important that the people of Arvada look at this group and say, "Oh, I can see myself in this group." But more importantly, it's, it's, they won't participate unless there's their network, their, their piece of Arvada, the east side, has a connection. And those people from the east side are going to be the ones who say, "The way to engage folks I know is this way." It is the one-on-one interviews, or it is to go to this organization, or it's to show up at this local hangout. So, so we'd work really hard to make sure that we have that full spectrum, all walks of life, as we say, on that committee.
Okay. And then, so looking at the drawing here, kind of the outcome is that strategic plan. So several years ago, before my time, city council came up with some council strategic initiatives. So this committee, this 20, this group of 20 comes together, and they put forth a terrific strategic plan that is now differing from what council at some point in time came up with. How do you, how do you measure, how do you deal with that? Because we've got a whole program around the departments and focus and, and our, you know, currently, our cities, the departments within the city are being held accountable to those strategic initiatives. So how do we address that? If, if it was so differed?
Nothing in a vacuum. I mean, you can't, you have to go back and look at, just like I was saying earlier, is that when you do a stakeholder map or you look at the gaps in, in process or flow, nothing happens in a vacuum. So you have to go back and say, "What's a work we already have done?" And the thing that's great about having that strategic plan is you can ask your core team, you can set up interview questions to say, "What really worked? What did you notice as a community? Why didn't you notice this?" You know, you can use those things not to beat up on that plan, but to say, "Look, we already have, there's already a path. There's already a way forward. We're continuing to build on that." And make sure that your core team, council has an opportunity, staff has an opportunity to inform all of those pieces, so it doesn't happen in a vacuum. That's really poor planning.
Our strategic plan was developed from a citizen's survey that we have the longest history of, so it wasn't done in a vacuum.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Right, right.
Okay. I just want to clarify the conversation, that our strategic plan was a result of citizens' input, you know?
Awesome.
It, it was done differently.
Yeah.
Am I wrong? I mean, because I know it's been a while, you know, kind of memory doesn't always work for me. But, but that's what drove our strategic plan. So I just want to build on his question for a quick second.
Right.
So we get that input. I kind of see that you created a different strategic plan, and I still want to elaborate on, on this, because I don't understand the answer as much, because if we have a strategic plan based on a citizen's survey, how is this one different?
Well, and just before you answer that, how many, how many responses did we get to the last citizen's survey?
We did get about a 35% response rate. We send out 2,400 random samples, so that is considered statistically accurate. I can't do the math in my head. Mr. Archer, what is 35% of 2,400? But it's around 700 or 800 people. But it's considered, it's then weighted based on, you know, geographic location, age, demographics, et cetera.
So taking that information into consideration, maybe you can help, I guess, elaborate on, again, how we...
Right. Well, it kind of gets back to that question of how do you flex with the times and the priorities in the community? You have an existing strategic plan, and you also have coming up an update to that strategic plan. So this process is not replacing that strategic plan. What this process is doing is creating a future vision, kind of that can be a foundation for creating, for doing that update, a future vision and ideas. So really, what, what this process is creating is information that then will feed into the next update of the strategic plan. It's not, it's, it's, it's really funneling into, not replacing.
Thank you. Ms. Howard.
Well, along that line, if the city does a comprehensive plan, reviews it every five years, we do a budget every year, we've, we've already got a vision sort of here. We do a citizen's survey every two years and have been doing that for at least 20 years. How would this, how would this be any more of a foundation to get, I would, would you get 1,000 people to attend this kind of an exercise? I doubt it in Norvada. And, and again, I, I think we do a visioning every year and probably on a continuing basis. And then the thing, if we're going to get a product that's called a vision on top of all the things I just mentioned, and then we all of a sudden get a state law that says it's going to be a real problem building condominiums, and it alters the urban renewal law, and then we have a citizens' vote that, that destroyed our vision for better street maintenance. It seems to me that the city council, rather than relying on a, on a community gathering of 400 or 500 people, or probably less, we're doing this all the time. We have to, we have to change our vision and re-vision, if you will, in my opinion. And I don't mean to sound like a grumpy old man about this, but it seems to me like, to use a legal term, we're gilding the lily here a little bit. And I, you know, I think this has some value for probably some communities, but if you look at Arvada, and then, as I have, you've seen the vision of what Arvada should or shouldn't be, or they want it to be, it's changed lots and lots of times because different council people get elected. For example, the density of housing, 15, 20 years ago, 40 units an acre was, was as much as we were ever going to go in density. And now we're allowing several, you know, 20 units an acre. So I'm, I'm curious as to what the, what the product, as Mr. McGough mentioned, and what the, what the benefit would be for the city council to approach this and do this community, you know, rather lengthy process, and then, and then try to fit it in with all the stuff we've already, quote unquote, in my opinion, visioned. So that's where I'm coming from on the thing. But I just, to be curious, what, what kind of a product would this be in addition to the products we've already have?
So I think there were several questions that I heard. One is the whole notion of you have a comprehensive plan...
When I was preaching a little bit, I didn't mean to, but...
Yeah, that's fine. What, so I've been doing community engagement, I hate to admit how many years, but since 1984, and I've used every different kind of technique there is. I even helped, I was the lead author for the International Association for Public Participation's training in community engagement techniques. When I discovered this kind of strength-based process, I realized there was a better way. And the reason why I believe it's a better way is because when people respond to citizen surveys, they respond and they say, "I want X," and then they expect X. And if someone else across the way wants Y and somebody else wants Z, they still expect that their elected officials are going to give them X. They never come together and kind of walk in your shoes to say, "What, what, what is our vision together? We have different views, and we recognize we do, but we're going to engage in a process where we're respectful with each other, where we share what we love about the place we live and work in, and where we're going to try to work through those views, as Chris mentioned, to see what we would like to see in Arvada." When that happens, what happens is when people go to vote for funding for something, they vote for it because they trust their elected officials and they feel connected to their government. So for me, when I discovered this process, I felt like it was a much more authentic way for people to connect with their government. It doesn't take away your decision-making authority, but what it means is you don't have people out there who are going to automatically say no because they distrust the other guy or they distrust the people leading the city. Because they didn't get what they wanted in the citizen's survey. So that's, that's my frame of reference on it.
Well, let me interrupt you just a minute. You're talking about 400, 500 people doing this with the city guidance. They're going to produce some kind of a document or a film or something that then seven council people who change every two years probably, maybe, are going to adopt it and then use as a guideline for the comprehensive plan and the annual budget and, and so forth?
Well, it'll be the high-level vision, and then there'll still be processes for those plans that, that fall under that, that vision. And you'll, you know, there'll be this vision that then leads into your strategic plan, which, which you'll create, and those will, will drive those, like the comprehensive plan.
Are you using the street, the strategic plan, the same thing as the comprehensive plan the city has?
No, no.
Okay.
So here's just a question I want to pose to you. So I'm a small business owner, and I do a lot of strategy work with a lot of different organizations. So I'm not preaching, but I do have a question at the end of this. Right now, 76% of full-time employees in the United States are somewhat disengaged, are actively disengaged from their jobs. 76%. In my business, that is a killer. And so my question to you is, is 35% good enough? Because if 35% is good enough, then you're, stay the course. If 35% on your community survey is good enough, if, I don't know what your voter rates are, and I don't mean to be adversarial, but I'm, for me, as a small business owner, 35% doesn't cut it. Like, I need at least 50. And so I love your question about, you know, how many people do you think will come? Well, we need a whole bunch of people to help answer that question.
But you're not going to get 115,000 people there.
No, no.
And so your 400 to 500 are perhaps less representative than what we're getting in our survey results.
They may be.
Okay. Bob?
Yeah, just a quick question. I guess that brings up, I think where we're struggling is we have a citizen's survey, and then here's this, and they're almost competing projects. So I'm going to look to staff. Is it one or the other? Are we thinking about both, or what's, what's, what's the idea around this exercise?
I would suggest both. And I think part of what, from the staff standpoint, part of what attracted staff to this idea is the engagement part. The citizen's survey is a, is a great tool, and I don't see us getting away from that at all. We will continue, in fact, we're actually talking about trying to look at ways of enhancing it and doing it on a more regular basis, correct? To, to, to get more real-time feedback. But what this process offers is engagement, is where, is where we will be able to sit down and have, and, or stand up, whichever we prefer, I suppose, move in place, as, as Councilmember McGough talks about, where we will be able to, to engage with, with a large group of citizens that represent a wide cross-section of the community. You know, I, I would, I would, you're going to hear more about citizen engagement later tonight when, when we talk about neighborhood programming, but the, the attraction for us is that I believe we will get more information, and, and I think along with that, more information, perhaps information that we hadn't thought of before through this engagement process. And so that, that's what I would offer in terms of what, what, what we as staff saw as a, as a positive.
Do you believe that the two initiatives can contradict each other? Or is there a possibility that that could happen?
Certainly, there's a possibility that that could happen, but if it does, then that gives us more information to, to, you know, to work on and, and review and figure out what we need to do about it. I think more than likely, with the way this process works, we will find more affirmation of what people appreciate about the community that we can build on and make sure that we, that we continue to do that part right so that there's higher citizen satisfaction with living here in Arvada.
Yeah. So to answer, I know that's said a few times up here, the, you know, Hank, I'm just going to use my own words, handcuffing the future councils onto what the strategy is. We kind of do that today with our citizen's survey, so I don't, I don't see that this project would cause that, but, but I would assume we'd need to update this every so often. I mean, like we do with our citizen's survey, what is that, every two years? A year? Two years?
Yeah.
But we try to refresh our strategic plan by what we result from there, as well as what we, what we know. But does this get refreshed that frequency as well if we were to go down this path?
I, I think it very well possibly could. I think that's something we could certainly look at. You know, again, another reason why we thought this was worth bringing forward for the council to look at is we are now about halfway through a six-year strategic planning process, and, and feeling is that this would give us a, a way of being able to refresh that.
Okay.
One thing I wanted to add is, we could certainly bring the data from the citizen's survey into the process so that it's not two separate things. So, because there is a stage where we try to, you know, we kind of interpret what we're learning through, through the interviews and the meetings and all that, and we can bring the, and what we're learning from the citizen's survey. So that, in that way, it can be fed into the process.
Nancy Port.
So I'd like to comment and weigh in on the discussion a little bit. There have been some questions, and I, I would like to, first of all, say that one of the reasons why I brought this whole idea up in the first place was several reasons. The first was from the standpoint of differentiation in the city of Arvada from other cities. So in other words, when we're looking at Arvada, Arvada has its own unique personality compared to Longmont, Golden, and every other city. And in our world today, we have certain ideas that as cities, we tend to go along with because pretty much everyone's going along with those ideas. My thinking in this was, you know, we had dissension in our city, and why not really understand, you know, what people are thinking? Because there's a difference between doing a written survey and doing a methodology like this. This is what we consider more qualitative. When we do a survey, it's quantitative. We determine what it is that we're looking for in terms of the, you know, what, what is, what is it that we want to know? And then what do we... And then what are we going to do with that information, basically? That's how you basically look at a survey. But in a quantitative survey, you don't have the option of, oh, I just had the word in my, I hate doing that. When you want to question, probing.
Probing.
Thank you. I know that, I know it, it's there, you know? It doesn't always come out when you want it. You don't have the option of probing. So if, so for example, perfect example in our survey was we had the question about transportation. And we were asking ourselves, was it truly the fact that it was the quality of roads that people were talking about, or was it the inconvenience of traveling? Well, we didn't ask that question in that manner when we were doing the survey. Had we been doing an interview, we could have actually asked that question. That would have been probing. Well, what do you mean when you say you don't, you know, you don't like the transportation today? Exactly what are you referring to? So that's an advantage in this methodology that we don't have in the survey. And as far as the two working together, they could absolutely work together. Or we could look to get different things from the different processes. One, the other reason why, so differentiation, going into the project without an assumption that what we think is correct is actually correct, or is actually what the people in Arvada want. And I think that's very important because we do have to hear from our citizens. The other thing is, is, you know, one of the words that you put in your proposal that struck me right away was that partnering, partnering. And I think that that's very key in any type of leadership. Because if we look at companies, you know, sure, there's a board of directors and there's a CEO. But who are the ones that really often know what's going on are the ones that are actually in the trenches, right? And their opinions are just as important sometimes as the ones on the top. So I think that whole idea of partnering, engaging our citizens because they're looking at things differently than we are, I think that is a very strong contribution. It has been mentioned about council changing. Well, you know, I'm on council, and David, we're on council for the last two years. Neither one of us, or any of us on council, have negated what has been done in the past, right? I mean, we all look at the comprehensive plan, we all look at focus. We're all looking at what's been done and what we're looking towards in the future. But that doesn't mean that more information is going to, you know, be a problem. I think making decisions based on greater amounts of information is better than less information. So I see this as very, very helpful. And then I think the other issue is this picture piece to this project. Because when I first brought this up, my thinking was, you know, how do people envision Arvada, not just for today, but in the future? You know, there are different people in Arvada. People are going to be constantly moving in and out. We're aging, we're dying, the whole thing. The picture piece, I think, is a very strong piece, which I'm amazed, I've heard this before, you know, but I'm amazed in your proposal, how, if I can find it now, where you talk about the picture being, you know, we've all heard about it being worth so many words or whatever that statement, but you have it in here somewhere and I can't find it. But, you know, in terms of people remembering, and I also think that in terms of even new development, I mean, I'm sure we all struggle, even us who sit up here, we struggle with envisioning what things are truly going to look like. So I think that picture piece is a very important aspect that you're not going to get from a survey. And just one comment on the survey because there are four errors, there are four types of errors that occur in survey work. And the one error that really nobody likes to talk about is response rate. A 35% response rate is okay in this day and age. But a 35% response rate is not a great response rate. Because the bigger question is, when you do a survey, is why did the other 65% not respond? What's the difference? And that difference is the unknown, and we call that an error. And so even though, you know, they do all the weighting and they, all that's probability based on weighting, it's math, it's math, there's still that element of what about the other 65% that did not respond? What makes them different from the 35% that did respond? Okay? So those are the things that I've heard. I mean, you know, I would just ask that you really consider this. And yes, I know that people consider it fluff, but in this day and age, information is never fluff. And I will leave it at that.
Thank you. I've got a lot of thoughts. And from my perspective, I guess I'm such a proponent for representative government that, you know, people elect us to do a job. And I don't know how much we should defer doing our job to a citizen group that's, you know, certainly can give us input. But they have lots of ways they can give us input now, citizen surveys. They can come testify at city council, they can come during public comment, they can write letters to the editor, they can grab us at the grocery store. They can, you know, we give lots of opportunities for citizens who want to have input to have input. And I'm a little concerned about how much this process gets, to some extent, hijacked by special interest groups of whatever variety who sort of drive this in a direction that may not be consistent with how we think things should go in the city of Arvada. When, Nancy, you talk about dissension in our city. Frankly, there isn't much dissension in our city. There may be some people who aren't happy, and there's always going to be some people who aren't happy. But I would say, by and large, the vast majority of the citizens of Arvada are pretty darn happy with the way we're doing things. So, you know, I see a value, I always see value in having an opportunity for folks to be able to give input, but I don't know that I see a lot of value in spending $120,000 to $135,000 to do this. That's just my two cents worth. So, Mr. Devon, you need direction from us as to whether or not we move forward at this time, whether we ponder it for a while, think about it for a while, or how we move forward?
Well, primarily, the goal of tonight was to present information.
Okay.
Receive feedback. We don't have anything budgeted at this particular point in time, so we weren't really bringing this forward as something that we wanted to initiate right away. But we wanted to at least present it and have council offer some feedback back. It was, after all, one of your colleagues that championed this, that we felt we needed to follow through on that. So that was primarily, the primary purpose of tonight was really to present this information and seek feedback from you.
Okay.
And we certainly received feedback from you.
Okay, so we'll continue to ponder among ourselves. And if there's a sense that council wants to bring this forward, council will bring it forward in budget discussions. Okay, everybody okay with that? Okay, thank you, ladies. You bet. Mr. Devon, what's next?
We will be receiving an update on neighborhood engagement program. And we have Kevin Nichols, our neighborhood coordinator from the Neighborhood Services Division, to bring that to your attention.
Hello, Kevin.
Good evening, Mayor Williams, council members. We're pleased to be here this evening to give you an update on our neighborhood engagement activities. See if I can get this going the right way. So I'm sure you recall that there is a council strategic result that came out of your original strategic plan that basically talks about, by the year 2019, 50% of the identified neighborhoods in the city who did not have an organized group in 2013 will have one with which, you know, the city can liaison with. So this map represents kind of where we are with that strategic result. The green areas on the map represent those areas where we had a neighborhood organization in 2013. The blue areas represent the areas where we have organized neighborhood groups since then. I would like to point out that our neighborhood engagement program is a relatively new program. My position was only created in 2016, so we've really been at this in earnest only a little over a year. But I think we've made some really good progress. There's a lot of good energy on the eastern side of the city. We also have some emerging efforts in other parts of the city that are represented by those red symbols on the map. So we wanted to talk a little bit about our overall approach to neighborhood engagement because neighborhood groups really go through kind of an evolutionary process. We have areas that are unorganized, and our focus on those areas is really on connecting people. We believe that when you connect people and start to form those social bonds, that's really the basis for people starting to do other things. So we really do that through programs like the Block Party Trailer, our Block Party Grants, our Neighborhood Movie Package, our Neighborhood Rehab Program. We're going to be doing a Tool Trailer that I'll talk about here shortly. We're also doing it through City Hall 101, you know, starting to give citizens information, build the leadership that is necessary to form neighborhood groups. And then we have our emerging neighborhood groups, and the focus there is really on organizing a neighborhood group. We really try to help people develop their core leadership, define boundaries, establish goals, determine how they need to communicate with each other. We have things like organizing grants that help people do that, neighborhood improvement grants. We're finalizing a thing called a How to Create a Neighborhood Group Manual. And we do a lot of coaching with neighborhood groups on project ideas, how to run meetings, how to get people involved, all that sort of thing. And then we also have groups that are, of course, established. And the focus there is really on sustaining a group. I'm sure you've all been involved with groups in your past where a group might go gangbusters for a while, and then you have leadership that gets burnt out, and maybe there is an pressing issue, and it's hard to keep it going. And so we're trying to do a number of things to really help neighborhood groups keep going once they are established. Things like our Neighborhood of Excellence Program, a new program that we're developing that I'll be talking about. Then also the things that we use other places, like the Block Party Grants and Trailer, our Neighborhood Movies. And then another thing that we're really trying to do more of is really connecting neighborhood leaders to each other because we believe that neighborhood leaders can just learn so much from talking to each other and sharing ideas. So in terms of neighborhood organizing, I think we've had a really good year in 2016. There's been three major groups that have organized, the Far Horizons, Britton Park, and Homestead Park Neighborhoods. Here's a few photos that show some of their activities. It's really interesting working with neighborhoods because they're all different. They have different things they want to focus on and do. And you can see in the lower left there, one of the things the Britton Park Neighborhood did was a Halloween costume contest that was for both adults and kids. They had, I think, 150 people or so show up for that. The Far Horizons Group, they did a creative thing where they did a neighborhood garage sale. They got everybody together to bring their stuff to Par Elementary. And you probably know that from your experience with garage sales, a lot of times you don't sell a lot of the stuff that you bring to a garage sale. And they worked out a deal with Goodwill where Goodwill bought the excess stuff. And then the Far Horizons Neighborhood donated the money to Par Elementary to buy supplies for the low-income children at that school. And then Homestead Park Neighborhood, they put on a neighborhood movie night. This was actually taken early in that night. They ended up having over 200 people that showed up for a movie in the park. So our emerging neighborhood efforts, we have some interest developing in areas like Hackberry Hill, the neighborhood near North Arvada Middle School. The PTSA in that area is actually working on a community garden, and we're hoping to leverage that effort into a neighborhood group. We have the area around 72nd and Sims where you have the relatively new Common Earth Community Garden. We've been working with them. And then the Alta Vista Campbell Elementary area. One thing we really try to do is we try to look for opportunities to leverage other efforts because there's always something going on in a, you know, different parts of the city. And so we look for efforts where people are already or being brought together and how we might leverage that into a neighborhood group. A little bit about our Neighborhood Improvement Grants. You might recall that we did a lot of work with you all last year on changing our criteria and really trying to include emphasis on public benefit and neighborhood involvement and greater emphasis on working with the areas in the city that didn't have HOAs. And I think we ended up with a good set of projects. The Britton Park Neighborhood, they got a grant for signs and a little free library. The Far Horizons Neighborhood, they got a grant for neighborhood signs and a message board. And we're actually going to be having a ceremony here in a couple of weeks to celebrate the installation of the Far Horizons signs and message board. And then Homestead Park, they got a grant to do some improvements, like dressing up the southwest corner of the park with some decorative rock. And actually, this last Saturday, they had an event where people got together to plant 15 new trees in the park, and about 35 people from their neighborhood showed up to participate in that activity. Also, the Common Earth Community Garden that I mentioned earlier, you know, they started their garden last year, and they're looking to expand it this year. Arvada Gardeners, I think you probably know the location of the Arvada Community Garden quite well. But we gave them some money to do garden improvements, and they're going to be working with us to try to help us create some neighborhood groups in that area through gardening. And then we had a group of neighbors that replaced a stretch of fence along Ward Road that was falling down. We also have a grant program in 2017, and we have $12,000 worth of funding this particular year. The cap per grant is $3,000, and we'll be bringing some recommendations to you all on May 15th for those grants. A little bit about our Block Party Trailer and Neighborhood Movies. These two programs have been very, very popular, brought a lot of people together. And you can see some statistics here for 2016. The Block Party Trailer was used 175 times. The Neighborhood Movie Package, 119 times. We estimate that about 9,000 people have been brought together through those programs in 2016. And then 2017 is off to a good start. We already have 101 reservations for the Block Party Trailer and 41 reservations for the Neighborhood Movie Package. And we're doing some work also on a Tool Trailer. This would be a thing we're doing to assist the Neighborhood Rehab Program. And it would be a trailer that would have four roll-off tool sets with common tools, but also a lot of real specialty tools that you wouldn't normally find just anywhere. Talking about the Neighborhood Rehab Program, you might recall that this last year we had our first-ever day of service. Many of you were there, working that day. Thank you for that. We had 10 projects, 140 volunteers. And this year, we're trying to grow the program, and our goal is 30 projects, 300 volunteers. And we've moved the date this year to September 16th. You might recall that last year, we had the same weekend as Harvard. You might recall that last year we had the same weekend as harvest festival weekend and we wanted to avoid that conflict, so we've moved it to the following weekend. We also have some mini Day of Service events going on. We're going to be doing a mini Day of Service on May 6th where we're going to work on up to four projects, 30 to 40 volunteers. Another cool thing that's going on is Keller Williams Realty has a National Service Day, they call it Red Day, and they decided they want to do a project in Arvada this year. So there's going to be 18 to 20 people from Keller Williams working on a home on May We also do monthly projects. It's more than just the Day of Service. Right now we have three active projects, five in the pipeline. The funding for the Neighborhood Rehab Program is $49,000. That comes from the HO Deg program, you know, federal funds. But one thing we're really trying to do is transition the funding for the Neighborhood Rehab Program to the community. We really want this program to live on in the future and we know local government's always challenged with its multiple priorities and trying to figure out how to do things and we want this project to live on for a long time. So we're doing things like creating a sponsorship program. And then we've also come up with a fundraising run-walk that will be held on June 24th called the Be a Tool 5K, 10K. And people will be able to either run or walk to raise money for the program. A little bit about our Safe and Accessible Arvada Program. You might recall this is the program that we created with those funds accumulated from the Visibility Ordinance that we used to have. We entered into a $75,000 contract with Brothers Redevelopment to run the program. We've approved five projects so far and two of them are complete. And a couple of photos here, the one on the left, we put money into a home that allowed a Section 8 person who is wheelchair-bound to live in a home. And then the one on the right there, we put some money into a home to both do bathroom remodeling and then also we put in a stair lift for them to act, have them to have easier access to their basement. This lady's husband is on kidney dialysis, so he has to get weekly deliveries of a large quantity of kidney dialysis supplies that can only be kept in the basement, so the stair lift enables his wife to get to those supplies. Our Snow Buddies Program is growing every year. We had 101 volunteers, including 10 City of Arvada employees. Mark Devon is one of those people. And we still had an unmet need for about 20 households. This program is just really increasing as we age as a community and thankfully Mother Nature helped us out quite a bit this year. And I think Mark mentioned that he had two actual deployments, right? Yep. So I'm not sure if we can guarantee that next year. So.
That's nice, Mark, that you put your shovel where your mouth is.
Then City Hall 101. Yeah, we had our graduation last week that many of you took part in. We graduated 45 people last year in 2016, another 45 2017. We asked them to come up with a class project and they came up with a very impressive list of things to give back to the committee. And we really try to engage those people after the class and them volunteer opportunities. As an example, this mini Day of Service that we have coming up on May 6th, we sent that out last week to the class and we have a whole bunch of people that have signed up to help with the mini Day of Service already that participated in the 2017 City Hall 101 And then our Neighborhood of Excellence Program. This kind of goes back to that earlier graphic that we're trying to do things to sustain groups that are already organized. So basically, we're creating a certification program where to be part of this recognition program, you would have to meet certain requirements, which basically relate to showing that you have an organized group. But then groups would also obtain 100 points. And we're trying to design it in a way that there would be a lot of flexibility on how people get the points. You know, all neighborhoods are different, some are maybe more into crime or beautification, you know, different things. So we're trying to design it in a way that people are going to have a lot of different options and really do the things that cater to their particular interest. And also there's a notion that recertification would happen every couple of years because we're trying to keep neighborhoods active. You know, it's that whole thing of sustaining a group. You want neighborhoods to be doing things, connecting with each other, you know, being active. So we're trying to create a mechanism that kind of helps people do that. And we're in the process of collecting public feedback on this program. We've had a few workshops already and we have another workshop coming up a couple of weeks from now. And then we'll eventually be bringing that program to you with all the details before we formally launch it later this summer.
Bob Pfeifer. So I still don't understand what the program is. So you have more workshops to define that program?
We have workshops basically to get feedback on our ideas about how to run the program. So we're trying to test out the ideas and see how people feel about like the required criteria, you know, about the points, the whole recertification.
What are we trying to achieve here? I'm still lost.
You mean overall?
Yeah, because I don't see the motivation for a neighborhood to do this. What's the motivation?
We think the primary motivation is really pride, that neighborhoods should want to be part of a program where they can demonstrate the pride in their neighborhood and how they are organized and active. And we are looking at some incentives that would kind of provide a bit of a carrot also. But we really think the primary motivation is pride. Greg ran a similar program down in Texas and he found that that was really the primary thing that motivated people is they wanted to be part of the program and not be left out of the program.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so that's what I had for you and I would gladly entertain any questions that you might have.
Questions for council.
Kevin, have you identified any common themes with the neighborhoods that have organized?
I would say all neighborhoods are a little different, but most neighborhoods want to be better socially connected with each other. That's really kind of the foundation. And most people want to do at least that piece, I would say. And some of them are okay with just having social events, you know, maybe like a neighborhood festival, a neighborhood movie night, a neighborhood dinner night, that kind of thing. But then there's other neighborhoods that become more active and want to start doing things. And I would say they're all a little bit different, you know. Some are more into crime awareness and others are into helping people with yard work and things like snow shoveling. Some of them are into beautification and it's a little bit different for all neighborhoods, I would say.
Thanks.
And we really try to work with them on their own goals. We don't try to go in there and say, this is what we should do. We try to work with them and say, what do you see your neighborhood becoming? And going back to some of the comments the folks had before, you know, we're trying to get more involved with identifying like neighborhood assets. I mean, I have to say we do come up with a fair amount of discussion on issues and concerns also, but we do also try to really focus on, you know, what are the assets, you know, that the neighborhood can focus on.
And just real quickly, overall, what are you hearing are the major concerns of neighborhoods?
Speeding. Speeding always comes up. You know, crime comes up a fair amount depending on where you are in the city. But a lot of it is, you know, people are just wanting to like improve their park and improve the appearance of their neighborhood and those kind of things.
Mark?
Yes, I just wanted to comment about the Block Party Trailer in particular. I went to, I don't know, six or eight of the neighborhood Block Party events last spring and summer and they all worked out very well. I see that's a lot of reservations to date this year. I'm just wondering if your City Hall 101 group this year might have come up with the idea to finance another trailer.
Hmm, okay. I don't think that really came out of the City Hall 101 group so much, but I think Greg could probably speak of that, about that a little bit. The idea of a second trailer.
Yeah, it certainly seems that we need one particularly in the summer. I mean, there's just a lot of demand and people are fitting them in on times that aren't the most convenient for them, just simply because that's the time the trailer is available. So, got another one coming?
As Kevin stated, yes, we do have another one coming, but it's going to be limited in use, excuse me. One of the benefits for becoming an organized neighborhood is you're fighting with every neighborhood to get that trailer. So that's probably going to be one of the biggest incentives. If you're an organized neighborhood, whether it's Neighborhood of Excellence or something else, you have priority for a smaller group to get that, which is really good for us because they have a group, but we need to keep that going, but they're fighting against, you know, 100 other people. We're already booked up for every Saturday in June of 2018, so yeah, it's popular.
Well, good.
Well, if you have two trailers, you're going to need more personnel. Obviously, you can't have one person handling two trailers.
Yes, this year, last year, we had a volunteer that helped out on the weekends. During the week, it's just staff when they're doing their rounds and stuff, so it's not a big issue. Weekends becomes a little difficult. We have a part-time person that's going to do it this year to help us out.
Well, these programs have a habit of growing and growing and growing and it's some concern to me.
Yes, that's why we're having a second trailer, but limited use. We're not just opening it up to the public or it would be booked out. So it's, we always tell people, get in there and get ahead.
I was going to ask about the trailer as well. So when you have these meetings, these neighborhood meetings, and I hear the top two concerns around traffic and public safety, are the police, is there a representative in that group with you? I'm sure they are, but are they there to participate in these discussions?
Yeah, we basically call in other departments as we need them for discussions, you know. So, you know, once a neighborhood group starts figuring out what they want to work on, then we'll coordinate with the police or Public Works Department or the Parks Department or whichever department and get the right people there.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Great. Kevin, can you go back to your first slide, the, what are strategic?
That one?
Yeah, so our, what we're doing, which I think are great things that we're doing, is it helping us meet our strategic result?
We're in the process of putting together some exact numbers on that right now, but I was doing some quick estimates today and I think we're about 20% toward our goal right now. So if you kind of go to this map here, you know, the unorganized part of the city had a little over, right around 30,000 households. And then, you know, 50% of that would be 15,000. But given what we've been able to do here in the last year, year and a half, we're about 20% toward that goal.
Can you go back to the goal again? I just want to look at the words. So you're saying that you identified that many households, the 30,000?
Basically.
Well, you said identified neighborhoods and I think that was a qualifier, right? Identified? Because we weren't saying all of the city. We were saying identified neighborhoods.
Right.
So was the 30,000 households, was that considered identified?
Yes, I would say, I mean, the way we're approaching it, we're trying to look at the map, you know, and, you know, kind of take out the green area, you know, and then say, okay, what do we have left, you know, that's really not organized? You know, those are kind of identified neighborhoods in the city that don't have an organizational group of any sort. And then, you know, 50% of that gold is, you know, roughly 15,000 households, so.
Yeah, I don't think I understood the goal that way though. Because I think you're, it's a lofty goal for you to try to achieve. I thought, when you said identified, I thought there would be like the Lake Arbers, the kind of areas where we know they're incubating as a neighborhood, even back here, you know, in the, what is it, Columbine area down in your area? You kind of know they were starting. So you knew that they had some potential. They were not organized yet, but they were identified. I thought it was that because I, if you're only hitting 20%, I'm a little worried you're not going to hit your goals.
Mm-hmm.
So, I don't know, I know he's, it looks like Mark wants to chime in.
Sure.
Well, I think there's a possibility that we may not hit the goal. I think that's, I think that's part of the reason why we're, you know, constantly taking a look at this and making sure that what we're doing in terms of neighborhood engagement is going to ultimately lead us to the strategic result. If it's not, then we'll have to look at other strategies to get there. But why don't, I think it's an excellent, the mayor asked an excellent question. I think we should provide you with some follow-up information that kind of illustrates our thinking in terms of what's organized, what's not, what we've identified. I think, Bob, you asked a good question as well. And then where we are in the continuum in terms of making progress on that.
Yeah, not just what identified, also what's defined as identified. I think, just to make sure we're all on the same page, because maybe our interpretation of identified is different than yours. Okay?
Yeah, it's kind of an interesting discussion because, you know, unlike some cities that have been around a really long time and have had a neighborhood program for a long time, we have parts of the city where in some cases, you know, you do have a sense of neighborhood, you know, Lake Arbor would be an example of that, or maybe, you know, Pomona Lakes, different areas like that. But then we have other areas that, you know, if you ask them, people in those areas themselves, what is your neighborhood, you'd probably get a lot of different opinions on it. And so a lot of times what we go through with people that have an interest in putting together a group is we, we kind of get people together and we say, well, what is your sense of neighborhood, you know, and try to come to a consensus on that and start talking about, you know, things they want to start working on. And they don't necessarily have a strong sense of neighborhood identity going in, but oftentimes they build one with some work. And Britton Park and Homestead Park, I think, would be pretty good examples of that.
Great. Mr. McGough.
Yeah, it might be worthwhile adding too that there's still some discussion of what a neighborhood is. One example is the Homestead Park, which is, I guess, just say 62nd and DePew is where that is. But there's a neighborhood to the west of that, Lamar Heights. And they've kind of been combined. And now some of the folks there are saying, well, maybe it's really two different neighborhoods. Maybe we have different needs. So there's still some definition, if you will, of what constitutes a neighborhood, but that's something that has come out from their own discussions of how they ought to do things. Maybe there might be different objectives for the two areas. Lamar Heights being the area that would be just west of the Homestead Park area. So the neighborhood definition might change as it goes through. It could be a separate one.
Sure. And you're probably all familiar with like nextdoor.com. I assume you've maybe heard of that or use it. And, yeah, the way those boundaries were started is myself and some people sat down and we made our best attempt at, you know, defining those next-door areas because we had to come up with something to allow the city to start sending information out. That was really the starting point. But we've always viewed this, that as kind of a placeholder, you know, that as we start working with areas, that those boundaries will probably change in certain cases.
no matter what elected official or group, they just praise this trailer and they all want to copy it. So we have a good thing, we're, you're innovative or however this came about, but it was a great idea. And to this day, I think the next group that wants to see the trailer is, the North Glenn City Council wants to see it because it's engagement. It absolutely is a success. And it does pull people out of their houses, onto the street and get to know the neighbors. So I just want to applaud the concept and the support of it. I do think a full-blown second trailer would probably be best, not a party trailer like. It's too, I mean, there's just a lot of demand and I think it's a good thing.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good. Thanks for the presentation. Mr. Devon, we'll look forward to additional information. And we can stretch in place very quickly because-
Brian only gets five minutes.
We're doing good. We need to get rested up before Brian starts. We need to get rested up before, you know, stretched and all that before Brian starts.
You notice I did that. Oh, I appreciate that. I don't know, after the last one, you referred to me.
Okay, Mr. Archer, you ready?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, we will-
Have Revenue Manager Ezekiel-
Oh, great. Hi Ezekiel, how are you tonight?
I'm doing great. Good evening, Mayor.
Good to see you.
Members of council. Tonight, I'm going to talk to you about the complexity of Colorado sales and use tax system. And I'm also going to discuss some of the efforts the cities made in conjunction with the Colorado Municipal League to ease the burden of tax compliance on businesses. As you know, Colorado home rule municipalities rely heavily on sales and use taxes. In our VADA, 66% of our general fund revenues come from sales and use taxes.
Hang on just a second, Brian's caused some technical difficulties.
We can see it.
Yeah, we can see it, but nobody else can. Way to go, Archer. You know, Archer, I was saying nice things about you today. You just totally.
Unfortunately, we can't get it up on the screen. I know you guys can get it up, so we'll just have to continue and hopefully it'll get back up on the screen. It is also visible on our broadcast.
Okay.
Okay, so as we were saying, Colorado is one of only a few states where home rule municipalities have quite a bit of authority. Home rule cities have the authority to set their own tax base. They can decide what's taxable and not taxable in their cities. They can collect taxes directly from businesses and also audit the businesses directly. There are currently 69 home rule municipalities in Colorado. And if you're a business that operates in more than one city, then you not only have to be aware of what's taxable in each city, you also need to be aware of the different licensing requirements in the various cities, and you have to be aware of what words might have different meanings in the different cities' tax codes. So as you can imagine, this could be very burdensome for some businesses. So consequently, in 2014, the Colorado General Assembly issued Senate Joint Resolution 1438 and they asked the municipal league, the Colorado Municipal League, to set, to develop a set of standard definitions so that home rule municipalities could all incorporate this set of standard definitions into their tax codes and the same words can have the same definitions across the board. There was a similar effort that CML, Colorado Municipal League, headed up back in 1992. Back then, they developed a set of standard definitions. All of the home rule cities incorporated those into their tax codes. But over time, as technology changed and business practices evolved, cities started adding different definitions to their tax codes and there was no coordination between the cities. So now we're at a juncture where we have different definitions. Now, in 2015, the Colorado Municipal League convened a Sales and Use Tax Committee and this committee consisted of one representative from each home rule municipality. And this committee had the primary goal of developing these standard definitions for all home rule cities to incorporate into their tax codes. But they had to be, they had to be very careful. The committee had to be careful not to trigger a table election. So these definitions had to be revenue neutral. They couldn't increase or decrease the tax base. After a lot of meetings and a lot of back and forth, a lot of discussion, in 2016, the committee finalized the definitions and these definitions were reviewed by representatives from the business community and also all of the home rule municipal attorneys. So now we are, we're presenting to you tonight the set of standard definitions and you've received them in your packets as well as an example in your packet. And as you can see, the example shows that the current definition, the actual meaning would not change if our VADA does choose to adopt the new standard definition. It would simply add clarity to that definition and then we'd have a standard definition that we'd share with other home rule municipalities. So that was the point of our presentation tonight, just to provide these definitions to you and ask you to consider adopting these into our tax code. Any questions?
Mr. Devon.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
I wanted to maybe provide some additional background on this presentation. We have been asked periodically to meet with representatives of the business community. We met with Representative of the VADA Chamber earlier this year and they are part, this particular representative was part of a statewide group that is advocating for the standardization of the sales tax definitions. And we've gone as far as working with the city attorney's office on drafting a model ordinance. There's no question in our minds that standardizing the sales tax definitions would be beneficial to businesses that remit sales tax in multiple jurisdictions. CML seems to be behind it from the conversations I've had with CML staff. And there are some communities, and Brian, I think, maybe can tell us which ones that have already adopted ordinances.
So we know that Golden, Westminster, and Lakewood were all considering them. Golden brought theirs to City Council, as did Westminster, for adoption.
So purpose tonight is to find out if council would be interested in us bringing forward an ordinance along these lines. We've been encouraged by CML and we think it's something that's worth considering.
Mr. McGough.
Yes, I'd just like to make sure I'm understanding this. Could you look at number 16? This will help me. We've got an area there, the first part, commercial packaging materials. So that's highlighted in yellow, says, "Okay, accept the change." So, you know, we're getting a different term there. Then the last sentence, "Commercial packaging materials does not include commercial shipping materials." And that says, "Change is different from our VADA." So it's different, but are we still saying that's okay? That would be the change. Okay, I just want to make sure, no, I'm sure I understand what you're meaning by those terms.
And I could add a little bit more to that. So when we, myself and other members of my team, when we went through those definitions, we highlighted and color-coded them to assist the legal department, Mr. Daley, in reviewing them, just to bring his attention to definitions that were different from what is currently in our tax code. But that example that you just gave, "Commercial packaging," we exempt that in a different section of our code. So by adopting the standard definition, a business could easily read that as exempt instead of having to look through the code.
Okay, so everything that's in here, that's in yellow and blue, would apply to us. That's, in green, we just don't, we don't utilize that.
Yes, sir.
Different, not something that we have in our VADA. Okay.
Forty-eight being a perfect example, medical marijuana. Okay, Mr. Marriott.
Yeah, so I'll give you some input. I wholeheartedly would recommend that we do-
Absolutely.
-adopt these standardized definitions. I think, you know, the tax simplicity is good for business, not just in our VADA, but around the whole region. And as well as it helps set the table or the foundation from which things like the Internet Tax Fairness Act can actually happen. I think these are the first, good first steps and I think these are terribly important things for municipalities, particularly as, you know, as our retail shopping habits become more and more online, that's set to the detriment of the sales tax collected by cities. And, you know, at some point, it's absolutely inevitable that online retailers will start to collect sales tax from municipalities. And we have to be cooperative with that in setting a, an environment by which they can reasonably do that. And I think these standardized definitions are part of that. So, you know, my, just my personal input, but I would encourage us to move forward with adopting these standardized definitions.
Okay, others on that? Mr. Pfeifer, I was hearing you-
No, I absolutely, yeah, I'm talking under my breath. I agree with everything that Mr. Marriott said. I mean, one's owning a small business and so forth and trying to deal with all the complexity. And I did, I did shipping within the state. It was tough to try to, you know, write my $5, $50, whatever, $100 check to different counties and cities. So the way that they were going, absolutely. And so I just wanted, one quick question, the clarity is, is all of us will have the same definitions and we'll all be doing it the same way. I know it says standard, but this means, as long as all the cities and counties are adopting it, we should all be mirrored, mirroring each other on those definitions.
And I think it's fair to say that we're still a long way off from that, but if we want to get started, somebody has to get started. And we've, as Brian mentioned, there's a few cities that have, that are in the process of doing that right now. And I think if we adopt it, I think that would help to generate more momentum towards more adoption throughout the state.
Absolutely. Removes a barrier out of internet. I do believe eventually internet will be collecting sales tax. We're seeing the trend already. And this is just one, I think this could have been a barrier to entry for tax collection. And just removing it makes it a little bit easier for that collection to happen and for people to get on board with internet tax collection.
Okay. Is everybody okay with bringing an ordinance forward?
You bet.
Very good. Direction is bring it forward. Anything else you got for us tonight, Mr. Devon?
No, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Ezekiel.
Oh, now we have one. Great timing, Mr. Archer.